Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Spencerport Central School District Board of Education Meeting, Tuesday, April 26, 2022. Please join me in to pledge the flag. Here, next item on the agenda for tonight is approval of the agenda. All in favor?
So, for the community members who are with us tonight, we have enjoyed over the last few months recognizing certain students and groups in our district. And as a new superintendent, one area of real bright spot in our school district is the amount of service and community outreach that our students provide. I see it in different clubs and activities and athletics. And so I was really hoping that our high school service club would be able to be recognized today at the board meeting and to share a little bit about their club. We have two students with us tonight. So I'm going to ask Mr. McCabe, who is also here, to come to the podium and bring our colleagues, yes, and the students, to share a little bit about the service club and the wonderful work that our high school students are doing.
Thank you, Ms. Swan. It's a pleasure to be here. And like Ms. Swan said, we're blessed to have so many students and organizations that give back so much to the community. And so tonight, we have the service club, our advisors for the service club, our Mr. Gerhart and Ms. Morris, who've done that for, God, how long has this been, Phil?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Eighteen years, wow. And have done so many great things for our community. And so tonight, we have Phil here to talk a little bit, and we have Alyssa Sugar, who's an 11th grader, and Robert Laduka, who's a 10th grader. And so they will take over from here.
Evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. So Nikki Morrison, I started the service club, like I said, I think it was 18 years ago. And it's really evolved over the years. You know, it started off with us doing primarily just things within the school building. And then over time, elementary schools would ask us to help out with Halloween parties and book sales and things like that. And then a few years ago, actually, I think about 12 years ago, another social studies teacher, Rick Mueller, said Disney offers these great programs where students come down and the park is basically the classroom, the theme parks of the classroom. And he went to, you know, Mr. Zinkwich, who was our principal at the time, and he said, well, why don't you hook up with a club that has good students, which we always do. And so we started 12 years ago doing this trip about every other year where we take students down. We use, or we sign up for a couple of programs. They used to be called Yes Programs, Youth Education Series. Now they rebranded them as Imagination Campus. And they use the parks to teach things related to STEM, things related to leadership. It is a great experience. And one of the things that we do when we take students down, it's about a year and a half process of planning to get down there, is we ask the students, who are usually already members of service club, to commit to certain service activities, just to show that they're not here just to go to meet Mickey Mouse. And, and once they do that, you know, over the course of about a year or so, and then we go down to the parks and have fun. It's been kind of difficult the last couple of years, obviously, with COVID, to try to do service activities. We basically really weren't able to do anything last year. And this year, there was still kind of a struggle to find things. The elementary schools are great about always asking us for help, but even that was difficult earlier in the year. We're actually doing this Saturday, our first, I think, like, full group event in two years, where we're working with the village to do some cleaning up around, spring cleanup type stuff. And so, so it's been kind of a challenge, but we've been, you know, plugging along this entire time. Got two, two of the 33 students that went with us this year is actually our largest group going to Disney. And they'll just kind of tell you what they did with the programs and what they did actually leading up to go on the trip. So it didn't matter.
So I've been in service club since ninth grade. And one of my favorite service club activities was volunteering to babysit the kids during parent meetings at Cargill Middle School. And I also enjoyed volunteering at vacation Bible school. It was a fun time helping kids and working with them. I also volunteered with sorry. Last year, helping them with the sports and also competing with them and against them. And the service club program is a great program to just get out there and feel like you're helping the community.
I would say my favorite service lab was probably working at the zoo during right around Halloween because, obviously, during COVID, it was hard to get groups of people together. But at the zoo, it was great because people could walk around, be socially distanced, deal with their family. I helped hand out candy. And I also, I worked with a woman and over the course of three hours, we ended up getting very close because we were standing there side by side handing out candy to kids. And it was just a great experience putting myself out there. And what better place to learn was Disney World. We got to, the Disney employees were great, very hands-on. And that was a great place to learn leadership and just, I've always loved Disney a lot. And it definitely, they kind of used the program to plug their Disney College program, which is students going and working for them for some time. And that definitely got me very interested in that for the future. So looking forward to that someday. Thank you.
This year, they did, what was it, New Park Design, correct? And then another leadership program. But in the past, we've done programs related to zoology. Zoology, I guess, is where, where we went to Animal Kingdom and we actually go behind the scenes, like where they're taking care of the elephants and stuff like that. So it's a really cool program. You know, and I definitely know that some students, you know, have left, over the years have left, you know, Disney, and they said, you know what, this actually kind of gave me an idea of what I might want to do. So there's definitely some value, and I really appreciate the support that you guys give, you know, every time we ask to go on this trip. So, because I know that that's something that students really look forward to each year for each, every other year. So, thanks.
Just thinking before students came up, Rick and I have been presenting the budget to certain groups. And we always start with our mission. And, you know, part of that mission is helping to, our students love learning. But it's also to create opportunities that help build confidence in them and give them the experiences to be contributing community members. And I think that this is a great connection to that. So thank you for the board, too, for supporting those pipe of the net for students.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity for students to learn the importance of giving back to their community and volunteer service hours. It's a great program that obviously has been very strong in our school. Looking forward to hearing more from them. So thank you for making that happen tonight. Okay, next item on the agenda is Board of Education. I'll turn it over to Mr. Bracken.
Yeah, so looking around the room, I think most of the people in the room already know about this. But at our last meeting, we kind of made a mistake in not following our own board policies. When Mr. Hutton resigned the presidency, there should not have been a open nominations, call for nominations and such, which it was supposed to be strictly right to, that the vice president would take over the duties of president for the remainder of the year. So to rectify that, we are going to, I'm going to ask to rescind that vote and then turn the meeting back over to our vice president. So, do we need to actually vote on this? Okay, we have a motion to rescind the vote of our previous meeting.
I'll make a motion to rescind the vote of the previous meeting.
Second, Dave, okay, all in favor?
Saving it, Dave.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And that, back to you, sir. Okay.
Great. So Corin's just gonna pull up a visual graphic for me. So one of the pieces of information that I shared in using notes was also some work that I've been doing, this in regards to war competition before. And I know throughout the past few weeks with Kevin Hun's resignation, there's just been questions about filling this vacancy. What's the proper procedure? So I just want to go through some of that. So some of the questions are, are school districts obligated to fill a vacancy? If so, what should the procedures be? And what are the vice president duties? We just talked a little bit about that. So should a school district fill the vacancy? Technically, the answer is yes. And I'm just gonna get my notes if you're there waiting for us a moment. Technically, the answer is yes. The law poses upon the district the power and the duty to fill a vacancy. In our situation in Spencerport, given the timeframe, it's a little bit difficult because, or a conversation that needs doing has, because the board does not have to appoint an individual to the vacancy now because the election is within 90 days. So there's, you know, a time period there that impacts this decision. What we talked about at our last meeting is that the board may want to consider appointment if there's concerns about having a quorum or anticipating any type of voting problem in the next few meetings. So then how is a, what is the procedure to fill a vacancy? So typically, the board can either call a special election or fill the vacancy within 90 days that it occurs, or appoint a qualified individual. The district superintendent can also appoint a qualified individual if a board didn't act within 90 days of the vacancy. So it's a special election, an appointment, or the district superintendent. We had been talking about the appointment again at our last meeting. So what Gary shared is, both in our policy, but also statute on this point, are the vice president duties. So our policy 1322 mirrors the statute, and I'll let you just have a moment to read it. Essentially stating that the vice president takes on the duties of the president when that seat is vacant. So again, the board corrected this by withdrawing the previous election. Just so you're aware, we did ask, the vice president does not need to take an oath because again, they're administering the duties of the president as the vice president.
No.
So then the elections, how is a school board member elected? How might elections impact the board vacancy? And when does the new board member take office? So how are board members elected? They're elected either at an annual or a special school district meeting. Essentially, in Spencerport, we have at-large seats, meaning that the candidate with the highest number of votes is going to be entitled to the position with the longest length. We're not voting for a particular seat. They're all at large. Their, whatever vote seats are open. So in our situation, and if you look right at this column, we have different vacancies as of the annual meeting. We'll have three open seats that people will be voting on. At the time of the vacancy, we have one seat that would be vacant, Mr. Hutton's seat. And then, at the time of regular, oops, excuse me, timeframes, the seat that is going to be open is a three-year term. The other seat is a three-year term, and Kevin's seat would be a two-year term. So in this situation, the voter who receives the highest number of votes would go into seat one or seat two, not any one of these seats. The second person who received the highest number of votes would go into seat two. And then the third highest vote getter would move into seat three. The caveat with seat three is that that would start immediately. So that person would take the oath upon the next board meeting and move into that seat and fill these 44 remaining days as well as the two-year, two-year term.
So Ms. Swan, so this is different than what we heard before? This is different?
It is. It is. And Dave, as I shared in his notes, you know, the complexity. And I'm gonna share another scenario. It does get a little bit complex when the terms start and when they don't start. So in this case, we would have two terms that started July 1st, and we would have a seat that would start immediately. The misconception that we had is that if a board member was appointed, that they would finish out the school year, and that is not correct. If a board member, if a board appoints a qualified individual, they only serve until the election.
But you lost me. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Back up an inch.
So our misunderstanding in our last meeting was, what would happen if the board appointed somebody? How long would that person serve? Would they serve until July 1st? And then the third highest vote getter would take Mr. Hutton's seat. That's not correct. That was an error, and I just want to be really clear on that.
That's what I understood, your notes.
Yeah. So in a different scenario, let's say we're talking about seat one, and this is an incumbent. If that person were not to receive the highest votes, let's just say hypothetically, they received the third highest vote, the board member, the incumbent, would take their seat, and actually, they would relinquish their seat. They would take this seat of 44 days in two years. And then you would have an opening at seat one. So then you have another vacancy here that would need to be filled. That would be filled by the person who received the highest number of votes. They would start immediately as well, and then finish out the term for three years. So there is a possibility in a scenario in which two of the seats would start immediately and then fill the remaining of the terms. And that's where the misconception came in regards to when people would start, why they would start immediately, why they would maybe start in July. So those are the scenarios in which we discussed with our legal counsel, gained a greater understanding about. So again, I apologize for last meeting and any confusion that our understanding may have caused the board. Does this visual help and make those scenarios a little bit clearer?
Yeah.
Any questions?
No further questions?
And I just want to share, I apologize. So we talked about this. If the board chose to appoint to fill the vacancy, that person would only serve until the election in May. And again, the third highest voter would take the office.
Any further questions?
Yes, I mean, we did have a vote to appoint.
Right.
So are we rescinding the vote?
We did.
No, we rescind the no, the leadership of the board, right?
Right, so.
There was a vote that passed back, too.
Right, yeah, for Mr. Masala.
Oh.
So the point.
So, so we can rescind that vote as long as we're gonna have quorum at our next meeting. One of the reasons why we did that was the concern for form. So technically, he would only be coming to the next meeting, which would be next week, the 3rd. Because the vote is the 17th, and then our next meeting is, I believe, the 26th.
Well, my thing is that my decision was based on the information that was given to us last meeting. All kind of woven in there. Now we're kind of dividing things up. So my perception, my evolving information is kind of changing, you know? Yeah, you know, so in my opinion, I think we should rescind it because it's based on new information. Because if I knew this, then I would have a different take on it.
Yeah, absolutely, because you only serve one or two weeks.
So technically, he would be serving one.
The same thing was that we'd have coverage.
Yeah, 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 based on two weeks ago's information, but this right here.
Different information.
Yeah, different parameters, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
I agree, because I stand by my original position that we should not have been in the business of appointing someone so close to an election anyhow. The special thing about elections is that it's our community's chance to elect someone to this board.
Right.
And appointing someone to serve for one or two meetings and then having to take that back is just, it's silly.
Absolutely. And I'm feeling the same way at this point that is, you know, our concern was quorum. That was one of the biggest concerns, making sure that we have quorum for our meetings. But at this point, if we feel like we want to rescind that, we'll have to have someone make a motion.
Motion to rescind.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor? Five of them.
You know, Greg, I don't know if we should, how can I say this nicely? Preserving their quorum, I don't think for me should be a prayer, making a decision, but we do. And we have six people.
Right.
It is what it is. We shouldn't do things to make sure, to protect us from quorum. I know it could be a big wrench to yours, but it should be based on our ethics and morals and objectivity. Not, we need four people, we need four warm bodies, you know?
Well, and we do, there is law that you can vote via teleconferencing. So it's not that, if you couldn't, I mean, I know there was concern about the governor's, you know, stay, but that's actually not the case. In open meeting law, you can vote via teleconferencing as long as you disclose your location ahead of time. So you can't, you know, the whole board couldn't be for now. But that's been in law since, what, 2017, 2018, school law, so.
Marcy, is anything we can't vote through Zoom, or is there any exceptions to that?
Currently, the governor has extended the date
Got it.
that you could participate by Zoom.
Got it.
But your reference, I think, to tell it, your video, I think, would have to be on.
In, prior to COVID, you would have to be in a public place.
You have to do your address. You have to disclose your address.
No, prior to COVID, you would have to be in a public place.
Like cops or something?
A restaurant, something like that. If you were going to, if you were going to.
You would have to give your address. And if somebody wanted to attend, even if it was in your own home.
Right, but somebody would have to be able to publicly attend where you are located in order to vote.
But now.
Now, yes, you could participate.
Now, it's open. Right.
Changes that.
And that's temporarily permitted or permanently temporary, or?
She extended the date.
It keeps, keeps, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's news to me, so that even makes my decision more.
Right. And some of the more detailed information we did receive puts us in a much better spot. We're doing the right thing. Absolutely. Any other questions or thoughts before we move on? Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate that. So the next portion of our agenda is privilege of the floor. And during this time, residents of the district may make an appointment to address the board. Pre-registration is required on a first-come, first-served basis for the five available openings. Remarks should be limited to two to five minutes. The board will listen to input but not respond, except to refer any specific concerns to the superintendent for follow-up. Questions should be answered within a week if possible. Speakers will please give their name, address, and phone number. The clerk will record this. So we have one privilege of this floor speaker tonight is Mr. Donald Bardine. Mr. Bardine, if you would make your way to the podium and give us your address, your name, address, and phone number, and we'll give you that full five minutes. Thank you.
My name is Donald Bardine. I live at 6 Ridgemills Drive in Spencerport, New York. And my phone number is 585-414-9987. I will address the board tonight concerning response from my last speaking at the board. It was February 15th, or you received a response. Mark A. and Mr. Hutton would like to respond to that tonight. And I'll start by quickly reviewing just quickly the four questions I asked at the February 15th meeting. Where, for whom does a school board work? How is the New York State funding for Spencerport School District determined? Do parents or legal guardians have the final say concerning the education of their children? And how does Spencerport School District determine the call for a student? On March 8th, I received a letter from Mr. Hutton. I don't have the whole thing reported. As you are likely aware, school districts are not required to conduct committees of four, but it is important to us to listen and consider the perspectives of our learning community. In addition, school boards are not required to respond to speakers' questions. However, we have made every effort to provide responses, resources to your arbitrary questions. If you have an end goal or overarching purpose for your appearances, please communicate that, as we are still unclear as to your direction or views you want to share. The questions you posed at February 15th meeting may be researched through the New York State School Board Association website or the New York State Education Department, and we will provide those links for your convenience. Parents and legal guardians certainly should educate their children outside the school day. And the district welcomes input regarding specific needs. During the instructional day, the district operates in accordance with its policies and practices, as well as state and federal laws and regulations governing education. As far as your last question, isn't unclear what information is brought up. Question one, this is my opinion. You can comment on whether or not, and please respond to me by email. School board members are locally elected public officials entrusted with governing a community's public schools. The role of the school board is to ensure that school districts are responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of their communities, not the state. Question two, I'm gonna pursue some research on that, like a battery on the funding. Question three, by your answer, during this instructional day, you believe the school district and New York State has the final say concerning the education of our children. I refer you to a 1974 federal law, Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment, 20 U.S.C. and 1232H. I believe every parent in our school district should be made aware of this law and how to use it. Parents have the final say in the education of their children all day, every day. Question four, the culture of a student should not be determined based on the color of their skin nor their social or economic background. Does the school board agree with this statement or not? And so, in order to implement a culturally responsive education, how is the culture of a student determined? You asked about my direction or views. I do not believe that our country or the constitution on which it is founded is systemically racist. I also believe that the New York State CRSE, Culturally Responsive Sustainable Education Framework, is fundamentally flawed. I invite you to ask me for clarification on this and suggest an open format where both you and any member of our community may engage in open dialogue concerning the subject. My questions are not arbitrary, but fundamental in establishing the foundation for our educational system. My end goal is to identify and have removed from our school district policies and programs that do not align with the basic values of our community. Is there any, I know you don't want to ask me questions on that. I just realized, I don't think I included these notes in what I turned in. So if you would like me to leave a copy of these notes, I'd be happy to. Marcy, if you'd like a copy of those, I'll leave them for you. And I just apologize to you, this is an honest admission on my part, I forgot to bring my hearing piece. So I'm not hearing what's ready to set. So if you'll please forgive me, I'm probably gonna take my coat and leave at this time, because there's no sense in my sitting here just to take up space, not my head. I do appreciate, and please understand, I'm not looking for a battle here. If you ask for clarification, I hope that this gives it to you, but please respond to me. I, in fact, I want you to respond to me so I can go further if there's questions. If you ask for clarification, I hope that this gives it to you, but please respond to me, I, in fact, I want you to respond to me so I can go further when there's, if there's questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bardine, appreciate your time.
I'll grab it later, thank you, Mr. Bardine.
Did you think of?
I will grab. Thank you, and Greg, do you have a copy of the original?
Bill Hunter, Mr. Bardine. Yeah, we do have a copy. Yep, we do have copies from ago. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and our consent agenda is just, well, we don't have any high school students here. Okay, so the consent agenda, we, um, I'm going to need a motion for the consent agenda. As, as well as the Personnel Action Certificated Addendum that we received prior to tonight's meeting. Motion to approve consent agenda to include the Personnel Action Certificate Addendum. Second, any other questions, concerns? All in favor? Five oh, thank you. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is our Board of Education, so, uh, subject one, President's Report and Communication. We'll call that Vice President, right? Um, a couple of items that I just want to, um, share out with the board. Um, I was really excited to see the flag football season kick off with the Buffalo Bills this past weekend. I don't know if anybody saw that on Twitter, but. A group of our flag football student athletes had the opportunity to kick off the flag football season in the training facility with the Buffalo Bills. Along with other schools in the state that are participating in this program, so. Saw some great pictures of, of, of that celebration and that opportunity for them to learn more. And I bring that up because they did such an outstanding, uh, gave us such an outstanding presentation, probably a month and a half ago. And it's really exciting to see this coming to fruition, so I was really excited to see that. Uh, just a quick reminder that we do meet again next week, May third, you know, usually it's every two weeks, but because of the calendar in May and with a bunch of folks, we're meeting again next week. And I believe we start at six thirty, am I correct for that, Mercy?
There's a budget here.
Yeah, with a budget here, exactly. We'll hear more about that a little bit. And lastly, I did attend the District Safety Committee meeting this afternoon. Um, they gave Darren and Jonathan gave some updates with our school district security. And also some, uh, updates about our security assessment, so other than that. Anyone else have anything to share with the board here?
Yeah, just real quick, um, the NCSBA annual wrap-up meeting and stuff is at the end of May on the last Wednesday. It'll be at Ridgemont Country Club. A group of our musicians from the high school will entertain at the very beginning of it, so. Like urge everybody to attend if you can. And also, it's not too early, think about, uh, New York State School Board Association's, uh, annual convention and education expo. Is October twenty-seven through twenty-nine in Syracuse this year, so a little easier to get to. Um, they'll open up registration for that, I believe, mid-August or so, sometime around that, if you have a desire to go attend it. I've been a couple of years, it's, it's pretty interesting stuff that you get to sit and learn about, so. Um, that's about it, Greg.
Thank you.
Another one. Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Hey, at this point, we're going to get our superintendent's report, so I can turn it over to Superintendent's one. Thank you.
So we have quite a bit of organizational work to get through this evening. So first on our agenda is establishing dates for organizational meeting. Um, we are recommending a resolution to establish the twenty-two, twenty-three Board of Education organizational meeting. Based on Tuesday, July, so. And that will help us avoid the, the first Tuesday in July is July fifth, so it helps avoid any conflict that may occur due to people vacationing from Fourth of July. Um, you would have received that memo in our board docket, so if there are any questions.
Motion to set the date, July twelfth. Any other questions?
Yeah.
All in favor? Five oh, thank you.
And that's fifty o'clock.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Six.
The, um, next item on our agenda is the election of our Boce's two candidates. Um, so again, this was information in the notes earlier in April, and for those of you who attended the annual meeting. With Boce's, you had a chance to hear the nominations of the candidates. Um, so again, if there aren't any, um, questions, we'll take the vote, or the board will need to vote on those candidates.
Okay, motion to vote on the, uh, Boce's two local election candidates.
And so we have, um, each vote is separate, so the first being for Gerald Mar.
Motion for Gerald Mar.
Go to the second.
Oh, I can say.
Okay, thank you.
The second is for, um, Dennis Laba, the resident of Gates Highland Central School District.
Motion for Dennis Laba. All in favor?
And the third is for Trina Lorenz, she's the resident of the Holly Central School District.
Same motion for Trina.
Okay.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you. Then the, um, final Boce's piece of business that we're, um, asking the board to vote on. Is, uh, the Boce's two administrative budget, again, that information was also in the notes earlier in April. Um, board members had a chance to, um, receive that information both in the notes and in the meeting, so. Wondering first if there's any questions. So ask the board then to make a.
Motion to accept the Boce's two administrative budget. All in favor? Five oh, thank you, Beth.
So the next, um, piece of business is determining the order for placement on the ballot of the candidates who are running now. I will, um, sort of let Mercy take away this portion.
Okay, thank you. So we have, um, five candidates this year. Um, I've got my little secure location here. Um, I can assure you, there are five slips of paper, they're all folded the exact same way. Um, I mixed them up, and I'm going to ask Lynette Cypher to help me. Um, so the person that gets picked out of the basket first will be placed first on the ballot and then so forth down to number five. The first candidate, Michael Nocelli will be number one on the ballot. Michael Mayer will be number two on the ballot. Harry Bracken will be number three on the ballot. Megan Sarkis will be number four on the ballot. And Christopher Stellina will be number five on the ballot. I see that we have a few candidates here, so if anybody is wishing to view the pieces of paper. Um, they are all the exact same size and they're all folded the same way, okay? All right, congratulations, thank you.
The next agenda, based on five, is the process and the agenda for the budget hearing and the meet the candidates night. Uh, so again, I had shared some past agendas with the board through news and notes of how the candidate tonight has been. Framed in the past, just to review that information. Uh, usually, the, at the budget hearing and the meet the candidates forum. Uh, we usually start with the proposed budget presentation by myself. And then, uh, answer any questions, have any questions or answers of the budget. And then we move into the meet the candidates portion of the evening. And so what that's looked like historically is a welcome by Mercy. And then an opportunity for the community to meet the candidates, have the candidates introduce themselves. Um, each candidate usually has two or three minutes to introduce themselves. And then a few minutes to answer a question that's posed to all of the candidates. Um, I know that typically at this meeting, the board engages in a conversation around the setup and the framework of the meet the candidates night, so. Uh, I welcome us to have that conversation, if you have questions or ideas that you may want to suggest for that forum.
Leah, I know you had some suggestions, would you be willing to?
Sure, I would just, um. For those of you who remember, last year, we had it, uh, done via Zoom pretty much, so it was videotaped. And we were seated, um, and you were alternating the first question, but after that, we were in the same order. So you always answered after the same person, so you might have started a question first, but then the second. Response followed just in a line. I would, I know it's more difficult in order to alternate that, but I would suggest having that randomized more. So that you're not always answering before or after the same person. Um, I think that. Changes, you're not always following, so in other words, if I answered first and then Mike was always following me, right, or vice versa. So I think it would be better to randomize that. I did ask if we could tell the candidates if they're seated or standing. I know that sounds like a little thing, but. You, if you come in thinking you're standing and you are like me and in a dress, it became complicated to know where your camera angle is. Um, and I have another suggestion, but I can't remember one. Anyone? It will come to me, but in terms of, um. Oh, I know what it was. It would be, and I, this is hard room, so this would be a more of a tech issue. If you could face the audience when speaking, as opposed to just looking at a screen, I think that would be helpful to the candidates. As opposed to just, you know, before, the, we were, it was reversed, so people were sitting behind. The candidates, we were just looking towards the camera, and I think it would be more beneficial to switch that around, if possible. Again, I don't know where that. Tech is here, but.
So Leah, I have a question for you. Uh, refresh my memory on this. Did each of you as candidates get an opportunity to answer first, so?
Yes, so that was randomized first, so. Everybody got a chance to answer first, but after that, it just wrote, so it just went in the line.
Yeah.
So if Dave answered first, then me, then Lori.
Right.
And it would be me, then Lori, then Dave, so you always followed the same person.
Yeah, the first time I ran, um, we had to meet the candidate, and I think we had five candidates or six even. And we sat at these tables, the tables that were set up like this, and we did face the audience. And we did all get a chance to answer first at least once, which I think is really important.
I think so, too.
But again, we went down the road, so the gentleman that was right next to me. After I spoke, he spoke, and then after he spoke, I spoke, so I think that we, I, I like that suggestion of making it a little more random, so you're not. Ahead of the same person or following the same person.
How do I fairly randomize without anybody perhaps thinking that I'm?
You have to bring your Easter bag.
I was going to say.
We could change every time, but then that would possibly take away the first, the answer opportunity for everybody.
I think, I think a lot of that too might be how people are seated, could determine how you do that, depending on.
I think last year, we only had Zoom.
Yeah.
Yeah, you were seated in front of the camera because that was the.
No, there was an audience behind, behind it.
It's just a few people that, yeah, attend, but we were doing it for Zoom last year.
I think also, kind of how many people actually come as well. You know, we have five candidates, what we have.
I think.
So I do know that Mr. Mayor has already informed me that he had a planned out of town, um, trip this year.
I'm in Florida.
Yeah, so he won't be able to attend. I don't know if Mr. Stellina was attending, uh, attended.
I'll be there.
Okay, and then Mr. Bracken. And then, um, I can confer with Ms. Sarkis and Mr. Nocelli.
Okay.
But, so right now, we would have possible, possibly four people.
Leah, do you feel it's, um, most important to have an opportunity to go first or to randomize?
Yeah, I guess I. You can do both.
Well, we'll, we'll work to see how we can do that in a time-efficient way, but I was just asking, in, in case we. Um, needed to prioritize, just as the candidates, I'm just wondering. Do you feel that it's, you know, more important to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to go first or to be randomized?
So what if I had the names in the basket, and then for the first question, I'll pull a name and that person begins? But that's only if we ask five questions, yeah, so.
Well, I know, but that can be done, I mean, here's the thing, that can be randomized ahead of time. That's just a quick little. Excuse me, do you know what I mean? But so, I mean, the person, I would, I think everybody should have an opportunity to go first, but I do think it, it. You're only going first once, so you have to think you have four, there's four candidates and four, you go first once, then after that, you're following the same. You're following after the same person every single time, or speaking before the same person every time.
How many questions did we do last year? We did three for three, right?
Yeah.
We were allotted only a specific amount of time, like thirty-five, forty minutes.
But this is, I mean, this is my, my one person's opinion, other people felt it when I bought it, then.
To be honest, I, you know, when I went through that process and, you know, there were, I think, six of us that year. To me, it was important that we all had a chance to, to answer that question first. I think it really, I think it really is a great opportunity for all candidates to, to lead that question up, to, to be first. You know, you all respond to a question quickly. I actually like that.
Okay.
Greg.
Yeah.
Would it be fair to ask our two candidates, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Plena, if they have any thoughts on what they would like to? Uh, it's a great protocol, but would you mind?
I'm.
Mr. Mayor, thoughts on what you'd want to see at the, I know.
I thought this year was, you know, it was good, everybody had an opportunity, and then we each had a chance to make a closing statement.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think everyone, one time was good, and then it was, we all had time to do a closing statement.
Are you going to zoom in, or you're just not going to be here at all?
What's that?
Are you going to zoom in, or you're just not be here at all?
I, I could, I'm not, these reservations.
You haven't got there yet, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, people are reading this.
Mr. Stellina, do you, do you have any?
No, I think honestly, you know, the randomization at the beginning is fine, and I think everybody should have the opportunity to at least. Possibly be first.
Yeah.
But other than that, I mean, as long as everybody gets a chance for closing, I, that's cool, I'm cool with that.
So I'm hearing, um. Thinking in a way where there's an opportunity where everyone votes first, it's important that everyone has an opportunity to close. And we will talk about randomization and how we can best accommodate that.
Marcie, you were going to follow up with Megan Sarkis as well, to see if she'd be attending.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then, can you just remind me, Mercy, how we typically come up with the questions for this?
Um, that would be one that's.
So in the, um, on the website, we have the submit your questions, um, and we haven't had very much luck with that. Uh, we compiled questions from previous years, we compiled questions from the Monroe County School Boards, they always have a bank of questions. So trying to figure out how much time we have, and then what. You kind of get a sense on the profiles to, on what is important for the candidates, to try to streamline some of the issues that are facing the community, so we kind of try to. Combine like questions together.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or questions? Thank you for your feedback. Thanks, guys, for your feedback, appreciate it.
Next on our agenda, I'm going to invite Jonathan to come up, is our Altairist Safety Study. As the board knows, we engaged in a, uh, safety study this year with Altairist, which is a consultant, uh, group that we use. Jonathan is going to share the process of that study, what that study looked like, and some of the recommendations coming out of that study.
Thank you, everyone. Um, I will try to get through this every, a lot of time, there's a lot of information. But I will say that we are in open session, and this is being broadcast from the internet, so some of it has been scrubbed. To, to, to not reveal some potential security holes or risks to students or staff. So if you do have questions that are very specific to certain instances, we can take that up. So if you do have questions that are very specific to certain instances, we can pick it up in a session at another time, or I could always circle back in another manner. Based on what was just written in mind. So we engaged a third party, Alteris Consulting. After a brief search from a couple firms, they were able to help us work towards prioritizing areas that we can make improvements in our, in our security. Their goals are really to approach it from a layered approach. So they have a number of recommendations or areas for improvement that we can then prioritize and take a layered approach to increase the overall level of security as opposed to maybe focusing on one aspect. For that, for example, later in the presentation, you'll see that one possible area that they suggested is a student resource officer. That is a very expensive sort of endeavor where you could take that money and use it elsewhere. And that doesn't necessarily increase the security or the safety of all of the various buildings. It's just one aspect of what they have brought forth. These are the goals that they have, and hopefully this has made it into your material. This is just what they have on their website. Trying to validate what we are doing is good, what needs, areas have improved for improvement, and what can be done at no or low cost. Their report focused on five major areas, district-wide equipment, exterior, interior and technology. But then they broke these down also into short-term, midterm and long-term type of goals. Like I said, I'll try and go through these quickly. You can always review the PowerPoint at your leisure. But district-wide improvement opportunities in the short term, really focused on team membership, making certain revisions to safety plans at the district level and at the building level plans. Ensuring that they're up to date, but they also made some suggestions for some additional areas that we could add into those plans, which are not necessarily required by the state, just so that we can make some additional, provide some additional guidance to our staff and, and families. Really to our staff and helping them manage incidents. Midterm district-wide improvements focused on training, enhancing communication, communicating safety procedures within the code of conduct, drill completion, incident command training, that is, you know, a national program through MIMS and the ICS training system. But also they mentioned increased security staffing in key areas. I put in key areas because I didn't want to identify any risks that we may have, but we do, they did specify two key locations that they thought additional security could be implemented. Long-term district-wide improvement opportunities, as I mentioned, the school resource program, school resource officer program, but also best of your entrances. This is a known area of interest for all of our principals with respect to our buildings. And we have informed you of upcoming capital projects that we are working to plan for. So we anticipate the, the large expense that would come with each of those, and it varies by each building. Some buildings are easier than others to implement. A best-of-bill type entrance, a secure entrance. Others, it's gonna be very.
Mine's gonna be tough one.
Yes.
Yeah.
But they also right now have the most secure building. But yes, there are some buildings that will require much more investment in making that change. Or with the help of Ashley McGraw and, and long-term planning, maybe making some other adjustments which may alter which entrances use or some other method of making that more feasible. I don't know. It really comes down to all the things that come into that process. Equipment, short-term equipment changes. They're recommending safety vests that arrive on dismissal for staff, especially when it was dark in the, you know, January timeframe, parent drop-offs, just kind of a vest, couldn't tell parents, there's teachers from standing out from the cars. Flip charts, building go-kits and parent reunification kits. Alteris is big on getting, having staff trained in parent reunification.
What is that?
So parent reunification, let's say we have an incident where we have to evacuate a school. And our off-site location takes us to some place, I'm not gonna identify it right now, takes us to another location. Parent reunification is the process you put in place at that other location to make sure that every student is accounted for. Every parent has the right to pick up their student. And then it also incorporates the safety, the management of the entire facility, but also ensuring those students have any necessary counseling and other things that are going on during that process. So it is a complicated process, but there are outside agencies, there's a foundation called the I Help You Guys Foundation, which has a lot of material on their website and kits that you can purchase and, and implement with established plans for making this work.
Where the kids turn you off there, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it really is kind of a go-kit, you know, putting it in a, in a suitcase that a principal or administrator can take from that building.
Yeah.
We had an incident a couple of years ago where we transitioned students, everyone out of high school over into the middle school. Because someone smelled gas. It had come out of the atmosphere. There was no gas leak down. But that is the kind of incident where that additional planning for a go-kid with rosters, medical information, other things, and they have a checklist, checklist for all of this and processes. But those are the kind of things that we could work to assemble and then find a place to store it to the buildings. Exterior wayfinding, perimeter fencing, some areas just designating the outer perimeter of our properties, staging areas, exterior lighting, doors and windows, ensuring that everything is adequate for securing those facilities and having people on the outside of those facilities. Interior, a couple policies, you know, policies dictating that staff should keep doors locked at all times. Because as a member of our safety committee continues to remind us, the first thing that you lose in a emergency incident such as an intruder is your fine motor skills. So having the ability with the door locked, all you have to do is close it. That's much easier to do at the elementary level than maybe at the secondary level from the feedback that we've got. So, but their recommendation, a policy saying that, now whether that's a board policy or an internal policy still remains to be seen. Security in unoccupied rooms, electrical panels, Darren is all, our director of facilities, already making sure that those, that the electrical panels are secure. Really, that's just a matter of making sure that students are making, are, are getting those electric, electrical panels locked in the locked position so that students don't have access to those. But minor things we're already working on. Room preparation, common area, large area security drills. Some, some buildings were doing this, some buildings weren't, you know, a fire drill for students during the, during lunchtime for other areas where there may be an, it's an issue of supervision.
So do we have electric panels in common areas? Aren't they all, I'm like, they're so obviously open?
Even in this building, randomly in the hall.
Just there.
And that's just where things have been put in place. This, this, yeah, as, as upgrades have happened.
Sure.
And conduit and other things are run, it just.
Yeah, it's, we're just.
Easier to just put a panel on the wall. Room numbering, where our Darren and his team are already working on room numbers for outside buildings. Lock sets, safety film in key locations. Technology, additional visitor management system trainings, lockdown panic system. Some of these are, you know, really suggestions of what they're seeing in other areas. Door jar sensors, security cameras always an interest. VoIP phone system, if you recall, we did transition to a VoIP phone system a number of years ago, just a couple of years ago. But this is really about integrating that into a call system and an emergency system. Because one thing that Alteris really likes to focus on is they want all staff empowered to initiate a lockdown. Because that helps reduce response time and get people into safety faster. So that is not something that we currently do. It's not something I don't think many do. But there are different ways of doing that, but we have to explore, we're gonna go down that path as part of our implementation of the various recommendations that they have. Before I transition into the security survey that we did, do you have any questions on what I put in front of you so far? So to supplement the Alteris review, it was suggested at our safety team meeting that we do a little more outreach to our staff. So with Alteris's help, we put together a security survey which went to, which was emailed to staff, which they could help, which they could respond to, which would help supplement our survey. So this security or supplement the assessment. The survey itself had a number of rating questions, but then also fill in the blank questions. I'm not gonna bother you with all the fill-in blanks. There was at least 400 different answers with a variety of aspects from the extreme level of security that some people want to the moderate, you know, hey, we don't really need this kind of thing. But some of the things that we've already seen, like best-of-bill secure entrances popped up a number of times. As I said, the intent was to supplement the assessment. We did get 249 employee responses out of our, our large pool of employees. Teachers had the most number of responses and, you know, if it's just based on building size, our highest number of responses came from the high school and classrooms. You'll have a chance to look at these, but really what we're looking for is the blue and the green as agreed and strongly agree. And the staff primarily agreed or strongly agreed with what we've done with threat assessment. Alteris was very impressed that we already have the threat assessment team in place, but they want us to continue that, make sure we have training ongoing. And just, you know, lauded that we have that going right now because there's still a number of districts that don't. Response and training leaves some room for us to address. Transparent communication following events. Sometimes there's only so much we can say regarding events. Confident in the knowledge of training and staff to respond to emergencies very high. Little bit of area of training that we can do for staff who are supervising students outside of a building. Let's say you have an elementary teacher out on the playground, what happens if a drill goes off or if a lockdown, a little bit of unsurety there. The lowest one, the, the one at the bottom, that is Alteris. It's like I said, I feel empowered to put the building in lockdown. That is not a standard that we have right now, but that is a question that Alteris recommended that we incorporate into the survey. And then security and supervision, really just a measure of the yellow isn't, is a don't know. So for like after school, I've taken that as people may not have, may not spend a lot of time at the schools that don't know about the level of security after school. But security staff is visible after school hours, but either way, there's still a little bit of improvement that we could do with after school, but we know that with respect to after-school time and supervision. But during the day, security staff is accessible, visible and accessible during the school day, and they feel they have a safe learning environment during school hours. I did a little bit of a word map, a word wall, if you will, with respect to, we had four questions that were fill-in-the-blank. This one with respect to what you would like to make your building safer. You can see from the large security top of the list, but other things, doors, door locks, cameras. And that really relates to the next question is one piece of equipment. You can see cameras pops right up there. We have security cameras. We are in the process of transitioning and upgrading those, but there is always room for improvement with respect to those. Then I took a couple of responses, but rather than use the entire response, I incorporated some just without identifying the various buildings that these are coming from. Student backpacks was a potential issue for a couple staff members. Mental health counselors, recommendation, lockdown trainings, updated door locks, security staff. Classroom phones. Now each classroom has a way of contacting the office, but there was interest in having a more confidential way of contacting the office in some classrooms. High school faculty parking lot, that's really about capital construction. We gotta, we gotta research that. Waiting room, that's best of the, I, the rest of that was wording really about best-of-bill entrances and security cameras. And again, the threat assessment training that even Alteris mentioned, we're just keeping up to date with that. And I know Ty had looked into that and I even emailed our last provider, but he moved on to another company after he left Roberts Wesleyan. Think there may be some room to get him to come back in, but I don't remember if it was pre or not last time, but now there's gonna be a cost probably to, to get him to come back in because he's a private organization now. Our next steps, we're communicating the results. We've presented this now to administrators, the safety team that's this evening. And now our job is to prioritize the results. Take some of that prioritization, take it to the, just review it with the district safety committee and hopefully come up with a plan, if you will, and then review that with administrators and solidify more of a plan that we can implement over the summer and then for the beginning of the next school. At the bottom here, this is also something that we did present to the administrators, proposed security changes. So based on a little tweet to what I presented to admin council, based on some of the feedback that I had today at the safety committee. In yellow is essentially what has been proposed to be put into the, in the next budget. So our director of security, we currently do have a director of security. However, the proposal would be to incorporate that director of security as a district employee as opposed to using what we currently have as provided by a third party. We do have the ability to go down that road. However, we do have options that we're exploring that we could have explored, either continuing with the relationship that we have, an internal employee, or even Alteris has the ability to provide an additional individual. Just the, the on that process is way is a bit more extended. But then that director of security position essentially is more of a half-response, half-emergency management and planning. So more of an administrative level. So the thought is to have a senior security guard who can be the second in command, if you will, to help out with response and primarily focus on response really at the second, at the secondary level. And then security four, you can see we already have three. I've, after discussing with the safety committee, I've removed all the locations. So that's not identified. But we did add an individual mid-year this year. So security four is really to continue that into the next year and maintain that position because it's, it's working along the way we have it set up. And then you can see the other stuff that we do have traffic control, art patrol, weekend patrol. So again, a little vague on what's there. I can provide additional details in another forum that you're interested. Any questions?
I just have one comment. You know, I'm a district campus lot with someplace sports. I see a security car all the time. I mean, all the time. She's everywhere. She's everywhere where it works. They.
We do have the car patrol that helps out with, with those.
The only might not be in the right time, but the, there is lots of distress over Cosgrove's drop-off in Monroe. I mean, it's, it's kind of almost a, you know, if you think about people getting angry, there's gonna be a spot because it's frequently a problem with backing up of traffic and getting people through the line quickly. And so I know that we have traffic patrol there. But there does get sometimes safety concerns with students crossing the main street to try to get to parents' cars over on the side or walking down the road to try to get to a parent's car is in line for a long time. So I just, I'm sure it's being looked at, but.
We, it, it really exploded when that first year of COVID. And at one point, it was backing up traffic all the way to district office.
Yeah.
So we.
I used to be behind, yes.
So we then moved it into the two lanes to try and not block the driveways of the individuals, especially the credit union and, and the other residents there. But then, yes, it does create a little bit of issue for the students. And if the parents don't want to wait in line, they are walking out into the street, cars stopping all over the place. And we are limited essentially to our property. Our security can't really go out on the main road. That's really the, you know, purview of the police until that creates an issue for them. How do we change that? I don't know. My recommendations.
So it brings me to a question. First of all, I, I know that the school drop-off spike for the COVID, do you think it's gonna settle back down next year?
I, I couldn't answer that question.
Yeah.
But I, but I would say these schools were designed in the 50s, 60s, 70s. They weren't, they weren't built with enough parking for staff and parents to be there on an, on an open house. They weren't, they weren't built with, with enough drop-off there for what we have. So we have to work with what we have. And, you know, until we can come up with. For what we have. So we have to work with what we have and, you know, until we can come up with a better solution for that. Really, that Cosgrove one also was affected by snow and, you know, the backup during the winter time.
It takes years if they give back the normal numbers, I think.
Well, I was gonna share that. I really think that that's. Or you're going to see that more. I don't know if you're ever gonna go back to. Yeah, pre-COVID or what it was. I think that that becomes a little bit more of. A community's pattern and you've got parents who work and are dropping off kids before work and. And those types of situations. You know, again, this is also, it, it's integrated in our K twelve master planning as well. As we look at campus needs and we look at drop off patterns and traffic control studies. Like those will be the areas in which we have those conversations.
If you think about when Cosgrove was built. Okay, years and years ago, that front move hasn't changed and obviously the demand is so much different when that was originally designed. Which takes us back to that master plan, taking a look at some of those. Areas that are challenging and how can we redesign those areas through a capital project to ensure student safety?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Kristen. I don't think that this is gonna be a trend that we see go away. I think parents have more flexibility in their work schedules now and the ability to drive to a film, so they just do and it becomes habitual. The other location, of course, I'm sure you're already looking at is the Fisk Canal View and Burnaby Share of the Drop Off Circle. Very stressful.
Thank you. So moving forward then on to our policies. Seven thousand and eight thousand series. I know that there were some questions asked ahead of time. Appreciate that. Jonathan and I had a chance to meet and discuss, and I know Jonathan, you had shared some thoughts via email as well.
Yeah, so. Thank you. Kind of just limiting it down to. Three slides, all seven thousand series policies. The one, the one, the ones that I put the bottom of the really ones we focused on for questions from. Participation in graduation ceremonies. My thought is this was, this language and this policy really came about from. Issues in other school districts around the state or other areas of the country, which were not allowing all students. To participate in graduation, whether the Bible fours, disabilities, post-students, things like that. But yes, it could be read as Ms. Brown read it to essentially mandate that. Even if the student is on suspension, that student then would be allowed to attend graduation. So when I was looking at the commissioner's decisions yesterday, I was able to, to see. That the commissioner views participation in graduation and extracurricular separate from suspension. So. This would essentially trump that. But it would still, if we add the wording that I suggest, which is. Participation, you would be participating in graduation unless there's some sort of disciplinary consequence that is.
My concern, I don't want people to miss out on graduation. My concern is that if there was a. Suspension due to safety, if there was.
A major incident.
There was a long-term suspension due to a concern that had to do with safety of students in the building, right? Then I would. I think you'd have to hesitate. About graduation and I would hate to see a policy that then enforced. Where you could enforce participation. Outside of that suspension. Do I mean, so if there was a student, I'm gonna throw a hypothetical. Student gets suspended for having a weapon on school property, right? Graduation comes, we get to participate in graduation and all related activities is what the policy. I believe, doesn't just say graduation from ceremony.
All related graduation, which could be read to.
Right. And now I think that that. That would have to be. Considered. So I would rather have it, I, I personally would feel more comfortable with wording that allowed for. That flexibility, that if there was a serious suspension issue where people did not feel that it was safe to have a. Student return to school property, that we had that ability.
I think keeping that discretion within with superintendent's hand and possibly a recommendation from the hearing officers. Not, as I said, I didn't make recommendations like that, but. Prohibition of graduation in what I was doing here is very common for suspensions that happen. And, and it was used widely, not just for weapons. But any suspension that was a, a long-term suspension for a number of weeks often ended up in that.
In that walking.
In that walking, right? I even had a student approach me at, who I had suspended, approached me at the public market in the city. He was working a booth and he said that he was proud that he got to attend graduation. Because he fulfilled the requirements that the suspension that the superintendent put in place for him to come back early. And attend graduation. That's the limitations of the current education law is it may make suspension. And everything else that comes with it is kind of, you get an early return if you do all of these things. It's the system that exists now, but leaving the discretion and having that wording would definitely reinforce. Rights of non-custodial parents, this did prompt some discussion. And I think after your clarification, Ms. Stone. I think if we. Don't include the word elementary and just leave the policy as it is because it uses the word release. We, even the high school gets permission from the parents to release the student. Out of the building on an early basis. It's not an all or nothing. They do kind of sign themselves out, but there is a parental permission involved. So as long as we are not actively. Allowing it, you know, so yeah, I think if we just leave that word elementary out, then I think that would suffice it for what you were.
And I would say with elementary too, I didn't say it at the time, but we do elementary school here, right, through five, but. Elementary adds through six. Right? So Cosgrove follows a different policy in terms of releasing students.
No, Cosgrove also requires a parent to come in with permission. And I talked to the reader today. And she checks infinite campus to see if there's any rotations regarding parent and if there's a limitation on any of those parents picking up students. But they would also, it's, it could also go to the office or the nurse's office. But they are, from what I was able to discern is more aligned with the elementary than it was. Then the last couple policies that we had comments on was medication and personal care items. Really, Ms. Brown, it was about your comments regarding. Feminine hygiene products. That was a, a law that went into place pre-COVID, I think it was two thousand eighteen. We did go around and install dispensers in all the ladies bathrooms and in the buildings.
In high school buildings.
In six through twelve. So in essence, the secondary. But we do stock some, I checked with Mr. O'Connor, we do stock some in the nurse's office, nurse's offices currently. Really, though, it's more for an emergency kind of basis. So if the board wanted to add a sentence which changed that, is that from six to twelve to. Always, if you will, whatever age limit that we, it would. Make, ensure that is. Forward, and then they would have to make sure that's part of their annual ordering process. I don't know if we, or we could put dispensers in the bathrooms.
You couldn't, well, I would imagine that it's. Some classrooms have bathrooms in the classroom and somewhere in the.
Yeah, not, not at the kindergarten. But we could.
I mean, in the health office, I think adding a sentence, I think it would be beneficial to have it to all. Students, bunch of port who require that. And I think she's just saying, add a sentence to the policy stating that those supplies will be available at the elementary.
Yeah, so I would, my first thought would be to add a sentence which says that we will make them accessible. In, in, in a student health office at the elementary levels. And as opposed to dictating breed because that implies all the dispensers and all the other things that the kids will just play with. Apologize the accidents and medical emergencies. So. I think this was a question regarding the medication. Yeah, so when I read your question, I took group insurance to mean student accident insurance, which we do not carry, we're not required to carry that. But in essence, we are not. As far as I was able to discern from anyone, we're not responsible for payment of an ambulance transport. So if a student accident does take place, the family and their insurance is responsible for that ambulance transport. I don't know without exploring further into student accident insurance, even if. Those transports would be covered from what I was able, when I talked with Rick about it, those policies don't even necessarily cover the full nine.
Oh, I'm sure they don't, but that's actually why I was asking, you know, if you. You call an ambulance to your house, do I mean, for an emergency, the ambulance drivers will ask you. You know what I mean? Do we have permission? I know this from personal experience. Would you like us to transport? Cause I said, why are you asking? Cause I was thinking if it's you're determining a medical emergency. Why are you asking me to transport? And the reason is payers, they're making sure that they have. Permission to deliver for that transport. So this was my, what, my question was stemming from this. So hypothetical, student. Brakes are like on football fields, right? Parents are not available by phone. We call ambulants. Ambulance comes, transports the student, parents have not approved the transport, do you understand? Because they weren't here. We called the ambulance. They get billed three thousand dollars for the ambulance trip and say. We wouldn't have approved an animal. You should have just waited for us. That was, that was where my, that's why I was asking the question. I'm not saying it changed the policy. I was just asking if, how does that end up being school district liability or not?
If the parents are gonna bring suit against the district, we're gonna turn it over to our.
Is that, that's how it would be handled? There's no backup insurance. Plan, that, that's, that's what I was, I'm not suggesting necessarily change the policy. I was just asking if that's how it's handled.
I think within the policy it states, we're gonna try to do everything we can to get in touch with the parents, only. If at the absolute necessity of going through the ambulance and in that particular case, you know, that may be the. The answer, then yes, we're gonna transport them. If the parents said, no. We didn't give you the authority to do that. And they're gonna pursue that through legal means, we're gonna turn that over to our insurance card.
In that situation, you know, when we can't get a hold of parents. We are obligated as agents of the school district to step into the parental role. So those would be situations in which, you know, unfortunately, we probably get our legal counsel involved. But we, but we do have an obligation. If we've done our due diligence, we can't get a hold of. Of parents to act in that capacity. So we would have to do what's right for the child at that, that point in time.
Yes, I agree. Except we're acting in that capacity, but we don't accept payment in that capacity. See what I'm saying?
I, I do, but still we would.
Right.
If we felt that it deemed to get an ambulance, we would have to get an ambulance and we probably have every right to do so.
I think your last couple of questions were about the next policy, but you also referenced the medication policy. So.
Because they're all intertwined. That was the problem, yeah.
So I guess when I rationalize this in my discussion with superintendent, I likened it to the school day. If a student has medications in the nurse's office, they could be anywhere in the high school. And not necessarily in direct contact with the person with the medication. The same could apply to a field trip if a student, you know, if the chaperone or the teacher has or nurse. Has the medications in one section of the museum, but the students are often in another section of the museum. Then it's similar to the building at the secondary level, they'd be able to call chaperones would be able to call students would have their own ability to call. Likely with cell phones. But I was also worried about getting in a situation where putting something in a policy would. Make it so student, any student with medication had to stay with one.
Well, no, I want to clarify, not medication. We're talking life-saving medication. So we're talking, you know, emergency inhalers. EpiPen or whatever, you know, that type of medications. And I'm gonna tell you where this comes from. I'm gonna give, here's a real life example. You're at Genesee Country Museum in the spring and. Elementary students are eating, you know, jelly sandwiches and juice boxes and there's bees everywhere. And you have a kid with a anaphylactic reaction to a bee sting. And now the EpiPen or. EpiPen's a brand name, but just forgive me. Is held with the teacher who is not assigned to the student who has the allergy. The teacher is somewhere in a Genesee Country Museum. So. Here's the issue, a student gets sunned by a bee who requires that type of intervention. And you are at a facility that is large, that's not easy to find directions. So you're gonna call a teacher on their cell phone. If they get the phone call, you're going to say. I have a student, they're in an emergency and they're gonna say, where are you? And I will tell you, but it is not easy to describe where you are. If you are. I'm next to the horse field. I mean, it's, it is problematic and in a timely response. So the reason I was asking is my feeling is that I know that students, there's a concern then about students not being with. Peers, but we're talking about students with a life-saving medication. That if you are off site, that they should be assigned to the person who is holding the medicine. To me, that just seems like. I mean, to have it be somewhere else and to not have access to it. Is difficult. Quite frankly, I don't terribly love, but the life-saving medications in the nurse's office, when people are out on ball fields. Way away. I mean, I'm truthfully, I'm honest, I don't like that either, but I'm talking about.
You bring up a very good point. You bring up a very good point. I would hope that though. There would be some kind of organized system put in place with these students that have these conditions and that. Whatever is required is with the employee that is supervising them. I would hope that that would be the case and there would be an organized process that that would be put in place prior to the field trip. Taking place, I guess is what I'm, I'm saying. I've been in that position. And there's always an organized process through the nurse's office, I would hope that. That those needs would be not immediate. If that's, if that's the case, I hope that would be what we would have in place.
So you're asking me.
I'm not asking, I'm just, my point is, I would, I would really hope that that. Something would be in place anytime a student does want to field trip or leaves campus.
And that's what, what Jonathan and I talked about, and I hear you, Leah, in regards to differentiating between the life-saving. Medicine.
Absolutely.
And, and just as I'm hearing and we're having this conversation, you know, again, so what Jonathan and I were talking about and grappling with. Is how do you make sure that the policy does not overextend that. Now we've created a situation where all students who require medicine are linked together. And now then they don't have the freedom to be with classmates or their friends. So we're trying to find that, that right spot. And I'm just wondering, because we haven't had this conversation outside of. What we're talking about tonight, is it possibly we go back and, you know, discuss with our medical director, see. More medical guidance in regards to that. And whether it be more procedures outside of the policy, you know, that we look to or. What about this language in the policy? I just would suggest to the board. That we do our due diligence so we don't tip in the other way, because I don't want to discriminate or confine. Children in any way as well.
Yeah, I'll, I mean, I'd have to think about that. I mean, in terms of, I don't want to confine anybody either. What I don't want is what my. Here's, well, this is what I don't want, is that parents that then have to call the parents and say. Yours, are you chaperoning a field trip? Can you carry my kid rescue inhaler? Because they're not assigned to someone else's trip. Yours, are you chaperoning a field trip, can you carry my kid rescue inhaler, because they're not assigned to someone's group. That's what I don't want, because that, we don't want other parents responsible for that. And we don't want parents sending kids on trips out of concern that they don't have what they need. And if they're older, they can carry it themselves, you know what I mean, but when we're talking about little ones, um, they can't.
So if you feel, you know, comfortable with this, let us do a little bit more research and. Uh, get some more guidance, both from the medical end, the legal end, and then bring those answers and conversation back to the board.
So I think that was everything, if anybody has any more questions, Elizabeth. Thank you, Jonathan, thank you, appreciate it.
Moving on to our business and financial aspect of the evening. Um, so we have a pilot agreement. Um, Rick, I'm gonna ask that you share information about that pilot agreement, I know you've been working with our attorneys for them, looking over. Um, that information, we'll answer any questions that the board might have and then um, look to a resolution.
Okay, thanks, Kristen, so I'm not sure how familiar you are with this solar energy, RPTL forty seven. So in November of two thousand seventeen, the board had adopted to opt out of this particular tax exemption. In two thousand and nineteen, they reversed that decision and we opted back in. So by opting back in. Businesses are eligible for the tax exemption when they create a solar pilot, so that's the scenario we're in now. When you receive what's called an intent to construct, then the district. Has to reply within a certain period of time to identify that we'd like to enter into a pilot agreement. So in this particular scenario, all of that has been done. We've been working with a representative from Delaware River, they actually sent us this template which has been used or has been. Provided to the county, the town of Grease, uh, we've had our attorneys review it. We then submitted that to you for approval, but in the meantime, we had provided that to the representative from Delaware River. Uh, they responded Monday afternoon and said that they did not have any issues with what we have provided them. So what we're asking for is approval of the agreement. Um, and the approval for Ms. Swan to sign off on that. What this allows us to do is receive additional funds through a pilot agreement. Based on the actual megawatts of the solar project. So the mouthful, you can turn to process.
Rick, what's that letter about parties having a chance to look at or something?
So when I, when this was um, provided in board docs on Friday. At that point in time, I was just getting information and the revisions from the attorneys, I had not yet sent it to um, Delaware River representatives. I did that afterward and they got back to us.
So this is all there's then.
So, yeah, even though it, it said draft, I mean, essentially, they've approved it, they're comfortable with it, if the board is comfortable. We'll take this, have Ms. Swan sign it, send it to the Delaware representative and we can wrap this up and.
This is the same agreement, we just didn't have a provider for that, right? This is when it was approved in two thousand and nineteen, we just didn't have anybody constructing.
No, so historically, we had a different solar farm that was. Yes, if that answers your question.
Yes, but, right, yes.
Rick, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so the line was, unfortunately, the timing events that allowed the final agreement to be completed and signed by all parties. But that's not true anymore?
I, I sent this to them.
Right.
They've reviewed it.
Right.
They shared with me Monday afternoon that they're comfortable with the changes that our attorneys, that we made through our attorneys. And then they would be.
Basically, if you sum it up, we'll have to say there at this point.
So Rick, if we approve this tonight, nothing will change with this contract, it's gonna say as is. And of course, if something did change, we would come back to the table and discuss it, correct? Any other questions, concerns, on favor?
Thank you, Rick, thank you. Alright, thank you again, Kristen, so um. On the revenue side, a lot's changed, I think I shared with you before that I was hopeful that we would. We had submitted information for what they call stacks, it's full of excess cost aid. Uh, that has been recognized by the stack unit, so that has increased um. By about four hundred thousand dollars, which is fantastic for us. Other than that, not much has changed on the revenue side, I don't think there's gonna be a lot to change and I said the variable right now is the sales tax. So I don't know more, come June. On the expense side, again, I've tried to take an opportunity to identify where I think we're gonna see savings. So the majority of where these savings are coming from is salary and then obviously through, you know. Less social security tax on that, um, and it's because we've been unable to fill certain positions. Or we've had resignations that I'm aware of, quite a few resignations mid-year, that's where the majority of this is coming from. Now, I don't, you guys, hopefully you saw I sent an email, I did add a page which is. The fund balance page, which is an attempt to share with you where I think we're be, will be right now. The one thing I can guarantee is that number's gonna change the next time we need, so right now, I'm projecting. A fund balance surplus of about seventy five thousand dollars. Okay, so that's it on the general fund side. Any questions before I move to school lunch? Okay, so school lunch, I'm not sure that I've ever shared and had this conversation with. Where we just, we are actually looking to have a surplus this year, in large part because. So had conversations with the external auditor, this the, you know, how to address this. Because you're actually in the potential of having more surplus than you're allowed to. So in doing so, what we've done is identified particular expenses. Within certain areas as it's gone throughout the year, Jonathan and Gary are also working on a plan for equipment. This has been long needed, where Gary can begin to look at old equipment that we can potentially replace. The object really is to identify where we think we're gonna be with a surplus. That increase the budget by that amount, to come in and be able to address old equipment. And manage the surplus, so that's really um, conversation that I've not had with it since I started here. So even though we don't have the school board adopt our school lunch program at the beginning of the year. Um, by bringing this to you each month, you're really sort of adopting the increase in our recommendation of their budget. So it's an indirect and, um, we flush this out with the external auditor, I think we're in good shape. Next month, we may come to you with a little bit different, um, maybe even a little bit more increase again, as the year goes through and we identify. Where we think we're gonna land, um, so again, I threw a lot at you right there, especially on the school lunch side, any questions that you have? Just so you know, the, the fund balance for school lunches, it's three months of average operating expense, it's not a certain percentage.
And on the topic of school, and it's still looking like next year we'll go back to regular.
Any other other questions, none, all in favor? Thank you.
I get the motion, I think I'm done.
Okay, meeting evaluation, anything you have covered? This is covered, it's great to see students back in the room, looking forward to continuing that momentum. With having those great spots and having kids report to us and seeing families here, so really appreciate that. Um, any other feedback? Alright, um, Laurie, would you like to?
Sure, I can make motion to enter executive session for the purpose of this stuff being the employment history of particular persons.